Call Stanley County Board of Commissioners regular meeting for January 6, 2013 to order at 7:00 PM. I'd like to welcome those of you in the audience tonight and those who may be watching on the delay TV tomorrow night. Also like to recognize that we do have our media here. We're pleased that you're here and you're very faithful to come and report things for us. At this time, I'll ask Commissioner Dennis for any indication.
Tonight, I'd like to begin devotion by reading from the first proverbs. These are the proverbs of King Solomon of Israel, David's son. He wrote to them to teach his people how to live, how to act in every circumstance. For he wanted them to be understanding, just, fair, and just and fair in everything. How does a man become wise? The first step is to trust and reverence the Lord. And from the third proverbs, they have two goals, wisdom, that is knowing and doing right. And number two, common sense, don't let them slip away, for they fill you with living energy. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, as we meet tonight, we ask that you will guide us and help us to discuss and to decide the issues before us with wisdom. Amen.
Thank you, Commissioner Dennis. At this time, I ask for any adjustments or approval of the agenda, and I do know that we do have a couple of agenda items that we need to have one add on for the consent agenda. Would be a resolution for the attorney. Are there others?
Yes, on the, in the minutes, they did not list that I, the exact amount when I mentioned about the Stanley County relicensing meter. The money total to spend was five million, thirty-one thousand, three hundred ninety-five dollars.
We'll correct that and do that in one day, do the consent agenda, okay? Thank you, Peter Glenn.
And then also, what was the one we're adding?
It's a resolution for the attorney. It's ended, it'll be in the consent agenda. It's just to approve and formally, since we have a new board formally appoint her as our attorney in residence.
And also another thing, I don't know if I take it out here, in the consent agenda, I think there was an item for contingency for a hundred thousand dollars. I just want to take it out of there and discuss it on its own.
Okay, we can pull that item.
For clarification, sir, is that the hundred and fifty thousand dollar budget, budgetary item for the open records and open meetings and public records?
Is that number E? Andy?
That's correct, sir. It's one fifty, and that's where I want to make a clear clarification from the one thirty that was mentioned.
Thank you, sir. I entertain a motion to approve the agenda as adjusted. Motion made by Commissioner Dennis, seconded by by Commissioner Ashudo. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Those opposed, no, and the ayes have it.
Mr. Chairman, before you start the meeting, I would like to make one comment. When I went over the agenda, I realized there were three items on the agenda that I'll have to ask, request to be excused from voting on, and I have given Ms. Brummitt, the clerk, to the board, the papers I've signed, to be excused from voting on those. And number one, the first is number one, with Mr. Reese Gibson on the rezoning. Mr. Gibson is a client of mine, and I have done legal work for him, including I did the legal work on this proffer that you're going to vote on today. Number two is Carolina Paper Converters. Also, I have done several contracts for Mr. Russell and Mr. Foreman concerning Carolina Paper Converters. I feel like I have profited by that, and I would ask to be requested to be excused from voting on that matter of the performance agreement. And the third item is number four, the Bridge to Recovery. I sit on the Board of Directors for that organization, so I ask to be excused, or the Board to excuse me for number four, number one, number two, and number four.
Thank you, Commissioner Morton. Any questions of Commissioner Morton, or I will, at the time we do those, remind that Commissioner Morton will be excused from those discussions and voting. Our first agenda item to this evening would be planning and zoning, ZA twelve dash oh four. It's a rezoning request for Reese Gibson, and our planning director, Mr. Michael Sandy, will be the presenter for that. Welcome, Michael.
Thank you, Chairman McIntyre, Board of Commissioners. For tonight is rezoning request from Mr. Reese Gibson. Rezoning from RA to R twenty, single-family residential. Mr. Gibson requests rezoning twenty-three point nine acre land from RA to R twenty, tax record three one one seven two. Property is located in Rainy Ford Road approximately two thousand feet north of this intersection with Pulp Ford Road. Purpose of this request amendment is to reduce the minimum lot size to R twenty standards of twenty thousand square feet, which will allow density, allow more density for a proposed subdivision. All the adjoining properties are zoned RA, residential, agricultural. Property is served by public water but not public sewer. Property is not located in a regulated floodplain or in an water supply watershed. Traffic on this section of Rainy Ford Road has been studied by NC DOT. It's approximately twenty-five hundred cars per day. Planning Board sends their recommendations to you with a favorable recommendation due to the fact that property is located in a residential area and is in a growth areas in accordance with the Stanley County Land Use Plan. We'd like to answer any questions.
Anyone have a question or comment of Mr. Sandy? Hearing none, I'll declare the public hearing open and ask that anyone who wishes to speak in favor of this zoning request, please come forward. Is Mr. Gibson here tonight?
Yes, sir.
Would you like to speak? You don't have to, but you're welcome to come speak.
If you need to, I will.
Okay, we'll just wait and see. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition to this rezoning request, please come forward. Seeing none, I declare the public hearing closed, and we'll, are there any questions, or what's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I did have a clarification I'd asked actually Mr. Sandy to mention before. I noticed this property is in an area that still has quite a bit of agricultural activity. In fact, it's, it's included in, I think you called it a buffer zone for a voluntary ag district. And would you just clarify for us if this property is developed, if there, you know, what the procedures are to allow folks who come in to build here to know that they're near an agricultural area?
Yeah, the voluntary ag district program is set up to notify property owners when they purchase property in that buffer area from a farm, that they're notified at closing that the property is in that buffer area and to expect farmer-type enterprises to interact, you know, around their property. Just a buyer beware.
I just think that's real important. I know that, I know that we're having development around the communities, but we're also still very agricultural, even in places like this, and it's important for us to make sure that we do all we can to make those cooperative ventures, and people don't want to buy something and end up, you know, beside a field that's getting sprayed or something like that with manure, so I think that's real important for us to do what we can to let folks know.
Thank you for that comment, and I think it is important that we do that, and that we have taken measures to alert folks who are planning to do things like that. Anybody else? What's the pleasure of the board?
We approve the rezoning, ZA twelve oh four, request of Mr. Reese Gibson.
I have a motion to approve this rezoning. Do I have a second? Seconded by Commissioner Ashudo. The motion was made by Commissioner Dennis. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no, and the ayes have it. Thank you, Michael, and congratulations, Mr. Gibson. Our next agenda item, also Mr. Morton will be excused from, is Economic Development Commission. There's a presentation of the performance agreement for Carolina Paper Converters Incorporated, and our presenter will be our Economic Development Director, Mr. Paul Stratus. Welcome, Paul.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Chairman McIntyre and Commissioners. I stand before you this evening to ask for your consideration of a performance agreement to support the expansion of Carolina Paper Converters in Oakboro. They are in the process of adding a high-speed, fully automated converting machine to their operation that I believe will further enable them to expand their operations. They do meet the minimum investment criteria for our property tax inducement program, and they will be adding a capital investment of a million dollars and eight additional employees with this expansion.
Anyone have a question of Paul or a comment? Hearing none, I will declare a public hearing to, for this request, for this performance agreement. Anyone who would like to come and speak in favor, please come forward. Anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to this performance agreement. Seeing none, I declare the public hearing closed. What's the pleasure of the board? Motion by Commissioner Dennis. Do I have a second? Seconded by Commissioner Donovan. Any further discussion? Just like to say that we like to see growth, however small or however big, we don't want to see growth, and I think it's great that we could do that exactly when they're already here, so. We have a motion, a second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, no, and the ayes have it. We have, this motion would cover the approval and the modi, there's no modification or denying, so it is approved. Thank you. We remind Commissioners that the first copy of that agreement we had did have some typos, and we did have a corrected copy at your desk tonight. Our next agenda item will be the proposed animal control ordinance from the Board of Health, and our presenter will be Commissioner Ashudo.
Thanks. Just while I was working on this today, it was kind of interesting. Keith Bryson, he's an avid cyclist, came in the store to talk to me about an incident over the weekend. He was driving with a group of people out on Aquadel Road. Aquadel, Aquadel always get confused, I know. Yeah, that's. Anyway, he said he was down there on Aquadel Road, and and he said that there was a group of them, and dogs came out chasing them, and the homeowner, there were two dogs chasing them, and the homeowner was out there cussing at the cyclist because they were not stopping to keep the dogs from running after them. So in other words, he wanted them to stop so the dogs would quit chasing them. But anyway, so that's part of this whole essence about the animal control ordinance is what do you do with animals that don't stay on the property, whether, and become a nuisance to a, to their neighbor. And I know at the first public hearing, they, there was a lot of objections, and you guys sent it back to the Health Board, and they did a lot of work and tweaked and took care of a lot of those objections. And at the second board hearing, they had some more objections, but basically from what I understand is, according to Dennis Joiner, he addressed a lot of those, a lot of the complaints in that second, or concerns in that second public hearing did not have an effect on, the ordinance didn't have an effect on it. And Officer Lambert gave me some interesting statistics about, you know, Stanley County and animals. In two thousand and nine, ten fiscal year, there were a hundred and forty-four bite investigations in Stanley County. In two thousand and ten, two thousand and eleven, there were a hundred and forty-six. Last year, there were a hundred and sixty-six bite investigations in Stanley County. And then over the last three years, at the animals placed in shelters, range per month from a low end of a hundred and eleven animals were placed in the shelter in December two thousand and eleven, and at the high end, there were three hundred and eighty-one animals placed in the shelter in June of two thousand and twelve. And that's from either them picking them up and from people, if I'm mistaken, people bringing them in and dropping them off. And rabies cases in Stanley County, there were seven cases in two thousand and nine, two thousand and ten. There were fifteen cases in two thousand and ten, two thousand and eleven, and there were twenty-one cases of rabies last, last year. And I know there was a suggestion of a citizen board, but the Health Board feels that they are the citizen, they are the citizen board that works on these things, and they would like either the ordinance to pass as it is, or else for the, for us, to tell them specifically, you know, like specifically what they need to change in that, in that ordinance that they worked on. And Dennis Joiner's here also to help answer any questions y'all might have. And I'd like to move forward with, I don't know, we need another procedure to do that. I don't know the feelings of the board also, if you want discussion on it.
Floor is open for discussion. If you'd like to make a motion, then we'll get a second, then we'll discuss it.
I would say some of your numbers there, that Mr. Lambert gave you on the rabies thing, because a lot of coyotes have turned. We've got a whole lot more than we've ever had, and I know they've not been treated. And they breed with your dogs and everything else, and I don't know about everybody else, we've got more raccoons than we've ever had. I've seen more coon than I've ever seen in my life. All those carrots, and now they can bite a dog and make them have it. And there's a lot, a lot of, a lot of animals never get through shots, either.
Anyone, anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, I would suggest that if we are going to consider giving it an up or down vote, that we have that back in our packet, and we have the opportunity to be prepared to discuss it. I don't know that we've gotten feedback from the Board of Health, other than what Mr. Ashudo has brought to us tonight. I'd like to know if there are details of that discussion that were held by the Board of Health, so that we have an accurate look at it, and then, and then if we'd like to put it on the next agenda for a vote, that would suit me fine, but I think we need more information than what we have in our packet this evening.
I do think that we, excuse me, go ahead, Mr. Chairman.
The only thing I got in mind was just for information only tonight, that's why I didn't bring my dog owners with me.
That's fine. I just wondered how we move the process forward. I think Andy has sent an email with, Dennis had sent a cover letter earlier answering the objections from the, from the board meeting with the copy of the ordinance. That was sent out last month, I think, wasn't it?
Yeah, I was going to say it's been, it was prior to Christmas. I'm not sure.
I mean, I've seen that.
But prior to Christmas.
But if we need to put this on the, you know, put it on a future agenda, I'm fine with that. I would just like to, you know, and the Board of Health would like some direction also.
I will say, back up what our manager and Commissioner Ashudo said, that we did get an email, response from Mr. Joiner from the Health Department, and, you know, it's all about the safety of the citizens, and that's what the Health Department's about, and that's what animal control is about. And seems to me like we've discussed this, but I'll yield to the pleasure of the board, so. Somebody needs to make a motion or...
Mr. Chairman, I'd move that we would put this on our next agenda with appropriate documentation to help us make a decision.
I have a motion by Commissioner Donovan. Do I have a second? I have a second by Commissioner Dennis. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no, and the ayes have it.
Mr. Chairman, can I just ask for a point of clarification?
You may.
If you want this back on the agenda, I think just for staff's knowledge, just so to be fair to you all, do you want another public hearing scheduled prior to adoption, or do the two that you've had sufficient?
A lot of them left that first meeting. A lot of them left that first meeting thinking it was going to pull in a board, I mean, some people to come in and help like the dog owners and stuff. I don't worry you have any hunters on this board or not. I have no idea. Do you have any hunters on this board? Dennis?
If they're.
But that's what, you know, that's what you had, we needed some representation from. I mean, sort of explaining, a bigger party called me, they had misread the thing, and they're reading stuff into it that was not there, but I couldn't get it across to them, so. They need a longer dose from you.
We will, we will have a public hearing then, okay?
On that, I, excuse me, based on timing, we may not be able to do it and get the appropriate number of days of publishing before the next board meeting, so it may be the February first meeting, may be a better time to do that, and that also ensures that all the board members are here as well.
Will Commissioner Donovan care to amend his own motion?
Yeah, I'll amend it if that's what we need to do, yeah.
Okay, so the second's still there. So, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of tailing this until the, and having a public hearing the first meeting in February, say aye. Those opposed, no. Hearing none, the ayes have it unanimous. Thank you. Our next agenda item is for Bridge to Recovery request. Will be presented by our county manager, Mr. Andy Lucas, and once again, Commissioner Morton will be excused from this agenda item.
Mr. Chairman, thank you, members of the board. In your packet, you actually have a letter from Mr. Jim Allred, who's the chairperson for the Board's Bridge Recovery. Back when this organization was set up and they purchased the house that they are currently operating out in the Oakboro area, they did not file the appropriate tax exemption information with the tax office, and so that tax liability stayed with them for two thousand and eleven. That's, they've since done that, and so their tax liability for two thousand and twelve is zero. But that two thousand and eleven tax obligation still stands, and so Mr. Allred was seeking to have the board release that tax obligation, and based on staff's legal review, we don't believe that that, we would not recommend that you release that obligation. We don't believe that the legal parameters are there for that. And so one, one up possible alternative for the board to consider, if you're inclined to want to assist this nonprofit who actually provides a service that's aligned to some of your goals and your priorities, and you've done this in the past on a limited basis, but you have done it, is do a one-time startup grant for this, for this nonprofit organization to assist with their costs. Is the most recent one I recall you all doing this for was Homes of Hope here in Albemarle, and so that's an, an alternative to consider, is to provide that grant, which you can do. That organization's goals of help assisting with substance abuse certainly align with your public health and your health and human services goals and certainly are a priority area, so. I would ask the board to consider the approval of a one-time startup grant, the amount of one thousand two hundred and seventy dollars for the Bridge to Recovery and the associated budget amendment that accompanies that in your agenda packet.
Does anyone have a question or comment? If not, I do have a comment. I know that in years past, not since about two thousand and eight though, this board has funded partially or given money to some nonprofits since the the crash, we'll call it, and hard times, we had stopped doing that, but we have given some money for startup nonprofits to get them going, so I don't think we'd be out of line in doing this one tonight, but I'll leave that up to the board. I'll entertain a motion.
We give them a one-time grant of twelve hundred and seventy dollars for the Bridge to Recovery.
Motion made by Commissioner Dennis. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Ashudo. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no, and the ayes have it. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, can we get a vote on that budget amendment that accompanies that as well, please?
I'm sorry, yes, we can. Do I have a motion for the budget amendment to that? Motion by Commissioner Dennis and seconded by Commissioner Ashudo. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no, and the ayes have it. Thank you for that. Next agenda item is a, an item that's, I think, pretty important, and our county manager, Andy Lucas. It's an emergency courthouse elevator repair and other cost-saving upgrades that need to be made there. Mr. Lucas.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and you've done a good job of summarizing this. This is the jack, which is sort of the cylinder and the bottom of the elevator unit that pushes the elevator upwards and brings it back down. The hydraulic fluid is leaking, and it's been shut down as a result of that. And this emergency repair needs to be done to get the elevator back for public use. And so you have in this packet this evening, the quote, to do that. These elevators are forty-three years old. They're the elevators that were installed when the facility was built, and so there's concern about the other jack. There's two elevators experiencing a similar issue, and so given the age and doing them both at the same time, as well as the other upgrades that need to be done for the modernization of these units, if all done at the same time, there's significant cost savings that can be accrued by the board, and so that's what you have in your packet this evening, is that, that scope of work and the proposed contract to do these emergency repairs. And we've also, you'll see a budget amendment that needs to be approved. We added ten percent to that budget amendment on top of the quote, just to ensure in case when they get in there and start making the emergency repair to that jack, the ground that that's, that's in, that actual jack is actually, the cylinder actually goes in the ground is, is deep as the building is tall, and so sometimes when they get in there and start doing work, land may cave in or something, it could be additional hours, and so we just want to make sure we've got sufficient funds in there to deal with any overages that could potentially occur. They don't, they're not saying it's going to occur, but we wanted to make sure we had a roughly a ten percent contingency, and that's why the quote that you see in here for the repairs doesn't completely match up with the budget amendment, but that if you add that ten percent, they're very, very much in line, so. I'll be more than happy to answer any questions.
That doesn't go in the ground as deep as it is tall. It just goes to the sub-basement. There's a sub-basement in basement. I don't really know that or not.
There is, but what I've been told is that cylinder actually goes all, something, they said that, that something be about the way these are, these, these types of elevators, that he told me that that went as deep as, something went in deep in the ground as the building was tall. I, you know, I don't, certainly I'm not a elevator expert and don't know, but I don't, I don't know.
Okay, we've heard all the information there, and...
Mr. Chairman, the budget amendment is going to call for a two hundred thousand dollar increase. I think that that's important for citizens to know that these types of things are important to the county and to the safety. You mentioned safety of the county earlier. This is an expensive repair, but it certainly is something that needs to be done and, and to protect the safety. Mr. Manager, I would ask one question, though. It looks like they were talking about fifteen or sixteen weeks. Is there an opportunity for us to somehow speed that process up so that we're, the courthouse is not out of service, or at least the elevator's not out of service that long?
Well, one of them, but the other ones will be in service.
They'll, yeah, it is a long time. There's a lot of man-hours, from my understanding of doing, doing these, replacing these jacks and digging them out and putting them back in. At all times, it will at least be one elevator in service. They'll, you know, they've given us that time as a conservative amount of time. Hopefully it won't take that long, and sooner, obviously the quicker we give them word that we're going to start, the quicker they can order the steel and the materials. That's really one of the issues, is getting the materials. There's such a delay nowadays in getting the materials for construction jobs that, you know, they just don't have them on hand. They have to specially order or get it made somewhere else, and it just takes long to get it made and get it sent here, so. We will certainly push them, and, you know, Jerry Morton will be working with them to keep them moving along, and if we see delays, we'll certainly ask why and try to expedite this as quickly as possible.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve this repair and the budget amendment that accompanies it.
I have a motion by Commissioner Donovan and a second by Commissioner Morton. Any other discussion? I will just mention that those elevators have also been abused, because I've been on there and they pack them in and they don't look at the weight limit. I've noticed several years ago, I was on there, and it was supposed to go up to a certain floor, and it didn't quite make it, went back down, so I got off. But anyway, that it's time we did something for those, but have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Those opposed, no, and the ayes have it. Now, we'll make one other comment about the expense. Folks may say, why do you have a healthy fund balance, and that's why we have it in case of emergencies, so we're glad we can take care of that. Our next agenda item is a presentation by county manager again, Andy Lucas, and it is about Oakboro wastewater treatment. Mr. Lucas.
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. In your packet, you actually have an email that was sent to me by the administrator of the town of Oakboro that seeks the, or extends an offer to the county to evaluate potential ownership of the, the waters, the sewer treatment plant and the pump stations, the outfall lines associated with that plant. The town of Oakboro is still interested in retaining ownership of their collection system, which makes complete sense for the town to do that. And so we need to have a formal process put in place to evaluate. I know there's been some interest in just in conversations, general conversations I've had with individual board members of, of pursuing this, and so that's why I put it on the agenda. I think also, you know, just the fact that we've discussed this, this issue came up with the consultant from Duke Energy that gave us some information about, you know, some of our strengths and weaknesses more recently. That gave us some information about, you know, some of our strengths and weaknesses more, more recently, um, about our economic development challenges. And one of them was, you know, our, 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 um, infrastructure and sewer infrastructure, specifically in the western part of the county and how we manage that. Um, and make sure that it's being done cost efficiently and that we're, um, you know, looking out after the repairs and all those kinds of things that need to be done to, to maintain a good system. To continue to, to make sewer affordable for businesses that want to locate here. And we've known that this is a, this is an issue. So, I think it's a, a good opportunity for us to, um, evaluate the potential of this. I think, um, certainly it's, it's an asset that serves all of western Stanley County and not just one specific town. And so, it makes a lot of sense that, uh, a, a county or authority entity would, would manage an asset that benefits more than just a one municipality. And so, um, before you, this evening is a, um, staff reached out to the engineer, our engineer, uh, and the engineer. And that, um, the engineers that are working with the town of Oakboro. And they put together a scope of work to do an evaluation for us to help us understand, better understand what is the, what is the value of these assets. What are the regulatory issues that we would get into that would cause operational expenses, um, um, for ownership of this plant? What are the capital needs of this plant, uh, you know, from, for the, over the next, uh, three, five, ten years? We certainly don't want to buy something at one price and then turn around and have to make significant pump upgrades or other things that we didn't anticipate in that, uh, when we, when we purchased something. So I think we need to go into it whether you're, or I would recommend that you go into it with your eyes wide open in terms of, um, the status of that plant. And I think, uh, Mr. Chambers, who we reached out to, has done a pretty good job of putting together a good scope of work. I think that scope of work and the cost, yes, uh, eighty thousand dollars is expensive. But at the same time, that's pretty consistent with other studies we've done, the evaluation of the, um, sewer, um, um, in the corridor of the airport was roughly that same amount of money. We got forty thousand dollar grant to help offset that, but we had to match it, um, with funds. And so, I think this, uh, this cost is, is consistent with others we've had, which I believe is reasonable. And so, um, so before you this evening, I'd ask you to consider, um, you know, maybe the appointment of a, a subcommittee to kind of help shepherd this along. And meet with folks from Oakboro, uh, meet with Stephen, and then kind of, uh, help to guide this process. Certainly not make any decisions on behalf of the board, but so help guide, uh, this evaluation, um, the conversations with the city of Oakboro or the town of Oakboro. And also, obviously authorize staff to negotiate with, uh, Mr. Chambers to carry out the proposed scope of work. And to approve the associated budget amendment that would provide for the funds to, to carry out that work. And I'll be more than happy to answer any questions the board may have.
Anyone else have, anyone have a question or comment for, uh, Mr. Lucas?
I think it's a matter worthwhile considering because it's a great benefit to the people of Stanley County. And if we could acquire this facility, but I agree with the county manager, we need to walk into it with open eyes to make sure we don't, uh, we're protected. The process is protected by what would be required of us once we get into this project. But infrastructure in Stanley County has been a situation that would improve greatly if the county could have such a facility under its control.
Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, I agree with Mr. Morton wholeheartedly. It's, uh, I think it's something we need to, to look at and go in with our eyes wide open and understand everything going on. I know we've worked on it in the past, I have, and, uh, but I think it's something we need to continue to look at.
Chair, entertain a motion to, uh, set this committee, uh, to do these three items. Do I have anyone to take a motion for that?
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion that we, um, appoint, um, our representative to the Water and Sewer Board, which is Josh Morton. Our representative to the Economic Development Board, which is Tony Dennis, to a two-man committee, subcommittee. I actually serve as the alternate for both of those, and so would actually offer myself as an alternate as, as well. But that we go ahead and, and authorize, uh, the motion would also include authorizing staff and negotiate with Chambers. And to approve the budget amendment as presented, so that we can move this project forward.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Donovan, do I have a second? Second by Commissioner Shudo, any further discussion? I agree with all the discussions been had, that, that this is very important and we do need to look at it and, uh, study it in detail to make sure that, uh, this is what we need to do. Any further discussion? Here none all in favor say aye. Those opposed no, and the ayes have it, thank you. Our next agenda item is also presented by county manager Andy Lucas, Board's Annual Strategic Planning Retreat, uh, Mr. Lucas.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the last four years, you all have had a one-day, um, planning retreat that you've held locally. To discuss the, the current year, um, set priorities, um, discuss other, um, key initiatives in, in, in more depth. It just allows for a, a setting that gives you, um, more than just a couple hours, uh, one evening. But, um, really gives you a chance to, um, to get into, to more detail of things. And so I would recommend that the board hold that retreat again. The board may want to consider a facilitator, we've done it with a facilitator, we've done it without a facilitator. I don't necessarily, um, think it, there's been, uh, in terms of results, I don't, uh, I think it's been good in both ways. And so, um, I, I presented some possible dates, uh, the fifteenth of February and the twenty-second of February. And the reason I've done February is, um, it want to give sta- staff a chance to prepare. But the other piece of it is that we start, departments start doing, working on their budgets in March. And so it's nice to have this out of the way. We know what your priorities are, so we can communicate that to staff and so that they can start building their budgets, uh, under the, with the backbone of your priorities. And so, um, so everything's aligned. And so, I put that before you, so to consider, one, whether you want to hold it or not, two, a date. And then three, whether you need a facilitator, you just want staff to, to work to put this information, the materials together and sort of guide your discussion.
Any comments?
With me being the new commissioner, I think it'd be beneficial to, um, to do that one-day retreat to learn, get some knowledge from you guys and everything else. And I can't do the fifteenth, I can tell you that right now.
Okay, fifteenth is out unless somebody else can do the twenty-second.
Mr. Chair, I was going to suggest we do it as soon as possible. I hate, I hate you're not available on the fifteenth, I'd like for us to do it quickly. But I certainly, um, approve, uh, and, uh, the, the idea of a retreat. I think especially, um, the ones we've had the last couple of years have been very fruitful. I also feel like that it's best for us to kind of get the monkey off the staff's back. I, I support paying for a facilitator because then they can bring things to us sometimes that, um, the staff may, um, uh, be in an awkward situation to, to want to have to discuss. Or that they can, they can throw questions at us or, or, or make us think about different things other than what maybe the staff do. So, I, I've found the facilitator to be most helpful. We've met at the airport a couple of times and that, that's always a great facility. It is in within the county, it is within, within one of our facilities. So, uh, I would, I would certainly suggest, if you need a motion, that we meet at the airport, uh, as soon as possible. And that I would like to see us have a facilitator if that, if that, if the rest of the board would go along with that.
Second it.
I would. Everybody okay with the twenty-second? Uh, we have a motion by Commissioner Donovan to do it on the twenty-second, have a facilitator and do it at the airport. And, uh, do I have a second?
Yes, sir.
Second by Commissioner Dennis, uh, or, did you do that, Mr. Shudo?
Yes.
Uh, he, yeah, you did it.
I made the motion.
You made the motion. Let me get it straight.
I don't know if he's, then I seconded what he said, then.
Seconded by Commissioner Shudo, made by Commissioner Donovan, seconded by Commissioner Shudo. Any further discussion? Here none all in favor say aye. Those opposed no, and the ayes have it. And I agree a hundred percent that facilitator kind of keeps, uh, our county manager, we have to referee between the commissioners. So, let a facilitator do that, keep us in line, so, uh, twenty-second it is. Uh, what time of the morning?
We've typically done it at nine, I think that gives you all a chance to, to, to wake up. And we usually provide a continental breakfast, uh, and...
Nine o'clock at night, that's great.
And then we'll, you know, we'll, we'll, um, we'll meet, uh, through lunch and have a, have a lunch available for you. And certainly we always use, uh, local vendors for that. And, and try to wrap up by four, uh, yeah, I think anything beyond that, you all get, uh, we get tired, you get tired, and, uh, we all get antsy. Especially if it's a nice day, which it's been the last few times we've done it in February. It's, um, I think it's been close to the seventies, so it's always nice to get itching to get out of there. But, so probably nine to four.
Sounds good, nine to four it is. Next, uh, agenda item is a consent agenda, and, uh, we do have an add-on. We also are pulling, uh, E. Everyone will find E in your packet.
Mr. Chairman, I would, uh, uh, make a motion that we approve all the consent agenda items with the exclusion of E being pulled.
Have a motion by Commissioner Donovan to, uh, approve the consent agenda absent E. Do I have a second? Second by Commissioner Dennis, uh, any discussion? Here none all in favor say aye. Those opposed no, and the ayes have it. At this time, we will have the discussion on number E. Letter E, I do know numbers and letters. Lord's open for discussion.
I just wanted to, to have a standalone vote on this, so we know what we're, you know, to, to have a little more transparency. Since it's on the agenda anyway, we might as well just have a standalone vote on it, that's why I asked to take it out.
Everybody's heard the comment that would like to have a standalone vote, and it was in the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to, uh, approve, to approve this, uh, item E? Have a motion to approve, do I have a second? Second by Commissioner Shudo, the motion was made by Commissioner Dennis, uh, any further discussion? I think this, uh, item is in there to, for contingency in case it, uh, it's needed in the future, okay? All right, uh, have a motion, a second, all those in favor say aye. Those opposed no, and the ayes have it, thank you for that. We've come to the part of our, uh, agenda, uh, where we will receive public comments, uh, from anyone in the audience who wishes to speak with us about anything on your mind. Most time we might not respond, but we'll take anything you have to say into consideration and think about it. So, anyone in the audits that would like to come forward and speak, please do so. Please give us your name, where you're from, and, uh, ask you to, try to limit it about three minutes.
It won't take long, Gene.
Thank you, Fraser.
Uh, I'm Fraser Honeycat. I live in the Indy community, but I'm an old Baden boy. But, uh, I just want to come forward and just ask you to, I know we all have these resolutions that you've come up with. And I'd just like to ask for a resolution at some point in time about, about Baden. They've got the centennial this year, a hundred years old, nineteen thirteen to two thousand thirteen. And I'd just like for you to consider that at some point in time to give them some honor, you know?
Would you do me a favor and, excuse me, ask, uh, the mayor to, uh, contact our manager and we'd be glad to?
I'll be glad to.
Yeah, ask, uh...
I think he's busy with other things in Baden tonight, but, uh...
And, uh, he wouldn't have to come, just somebody from, from his committee.
Okay, well, nobody, nobody put me up to this, I just sitting there thinking about it, and I think it'd be good to...
I think it's a great idea, and I'm, I'm glad you brought it up.
I think it'd be good to honor, honor Baden too.
Well, I, I agree, and so if you'd ask, uh, the mayor to make the contact with, uh, county manager, we'll get that done.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, great. Anyone else? Signal one, uh, at this time, uh, entertain comments from any commissioner. I won't go down the road, but if you have something you'd like to say, please, uh, just chime in.
Okay, I just want to say, um, as we proceed forward, I know we go to closed session. And hopefully we can give, have some good discussions back there to move the coal issue forward. So far, the Stanley County relicensing meter up to date as of one-one thirteen is now five million fifty thousand and thirty-nine dollars. That's five zero, five zero zero, three nine dollars that we spent trying to resolve this issue, um, over the dams. And, um, I really hope we can really, really brainstorm back there and just work on things to get it done. I'm afraid we're in the law of diminishing returns, where the longer we wait to settle, the less the Stanley County will benefit. Pat McCurry, who comes from a background in the energy, energy field, just announced his cabinet. And part of it includes Sharon Decker, who replaces Keith Crisco as the head of the Department of Commerce. As a work experience, she has seventeen years' experience with Duke, Duke Energy. So she'll be leading the Department of Commerce. He appointed Representative Mitch Gillespie to the, um, to an assistant to the, to Deaner. And, um, he's got an interesting background, he's, he's, works with environmentalists. But he also has got a lot of PAC money from the energy, the energy industry. And also, just background vote, I checked that he voted against, twice he voted against the Yadkin River Trust two times. But yet he voted for the creation of the Yawari Regional, um, the Yawari Resource Commission. So anyways, we're going to go close session, I feel that the time is now for us to work together, come up with a solution to end this fight over the dams. I think our window of opportunity keeps diminishing, so I feel confident we can go back there and get her done.
Thank you, Commissioner Shudo, anyone else? I would just like to thank all of our department heads for the work they do, and especially, uh, tonight. Would like to thank, uh, Mr. Joyner for the work that the Health Department's done. I know it's been long and tedious on you and kind of has on us to a certain extent. So, we've heard a lot of comments and, and hopefully we can get this resolved pretty soon. But I did want to mention that we do appreciate, and I appreciate the commissioners and, and their, uh, wanting to make sure we get this right. So, uh, we'll, we'll try to do that. Anyone else? At this time, I will entertain a motion and bear with me to go into recess this meeting, go into closed session to consult with the county attorney in accordance with GS one forty-three, three eighteen, period eleven, little a, little three, uh, three. To discuss four-one water quality permit intervention, APGIs, public records, request lawsuit, discuss an economic development issue. In accordance with GS one forty-three dash three eighteen, period eleven, little a four. And GS one forty-three dash three eighteen, uh, uh, decimal eleven, little a six, for a personnel item from our county manager. Entertain a motion. Commit, uh, second by Commissioner Dennis, and then, uh, mean a motion by Commissioner Dennis, second by Commissioner Shudo, any discussion? Here none all in favor say aye. Those opposed no, and the ayes have it. We are now in recess or in closed session. Actually recess until we get to closed session.